For a little while, I need to start voting no on some things to keep my tradition up.
Calling the common council meeting to order for Tuesday, July 28th. All of the council members did wear their masks into the building in compliance with the governor's issues, but we are six feet apart, so we can talk. Some of us are taking them off for now. We do ask when people present, if you were to come forward. Go ahead and remove your mask while you're speaking, just so that, and we have sanitizer up there, just so we can hear you, and so it can be recorded, more than anything, so it can be recorded. So, thank you very much. Our pledge of allegiance tonight, Police Chief John Mann is here. Can you lead us, sir, in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief Mann. First on the agenda is the roll call, Ms. Lee's.
Mr. Air.
Present.
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Next item is the approval of minutes from the July 14th special session.
Umum.
Second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Now, the approval of the minutes for July 14th common council meeting. Mr. President, I would move to approve.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, this is a hand vote. I didn't see you. You were here.
Up and down too quick for you.
Okay. Approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. President, I would move to amend the agenda to hear miscellaneous two after the approval of claims.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda to move miscellaneous number two. This is also a hand vote, all those in favor. Thank you.
President, I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended, all those in favor, right hand, please. Thank you. Petitions or comments by citizens, I don't have any that were filled out. If anyone is here that would like to speak on an item, there are cards just outside the door, and you can fill those out and bring those to the clerk, please. Council committee reports, I think just one this week, right, Mr. O'Connor? I think you've got finance, is that it? Am I right on that? There are two?
Yes, I have a brief one.
Do you want to go first?
Sure.
Okay, Ms. Wiles?
So the Economic Development Committee meeting, committee met briefly yesterday to review a report of the various personal property and property tax abatements that we have approved over the years. A report will be coming to all of us that will be summarizing what that looks like, but Amy Smith and other members of the Economic Development Department have done a wonderful job of compiling all that information into one document, and so that will be coming to the full council later on, hopefully the first meeting in August, but maybe the second meeting in August.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wiles. Now, for finance, Mr. O'Connor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance committee met July 23rd. Most of the items that we looked at are on the agenda this evening, so I'll be brief in my comments. The development agreement for Village at Federal Hill comes to you from the Finance Committee with a favorable recommendation, and I'll allow Mr. Murray and team to go through that. I think suffice to say, we've all seen and heard about this on a couple of different occasions, so most of what you will see is consistent with what we have reviewed historically. So, the, Mr. Barris, Mr. Spalding reviewed the appropriation transfer report for the second quarter, which is really doing what I think we intended it to do. Some of these smaller items where it's essentially a bookkeeping item, where you're moving smaller dollars from one series to another series to increase efficiency. There weren't that many changes, I think there might have been three in that list, so two things, I think it shows that the departments are paying more attention to where things are being booked, and secondly, I think it just helps from an OFA perspective, and the consistency and quality of the numbers has improved. So, the 2021 budget development timeline, I know the mayor and the administration and the department heads are meeting now. Just as a reminder, those budget dates are August 11th, 18th, and 25th, so that's when we will have the opportunity to review the work of the administration. I think we have one appropriation transfer, I don't remember which, if it is, maybe not. And we did talk a little bit, the golf director and the parks director are going to be at the next Finance Committee meeting to talk about the capital improvements at Fox Prairie. Given the environment we're in, we thought we would take a step back, take a look at what we're going to potentially invest there. There's certainly a need, but need to consider the timing, so that will be at the next meeting on August 6th, and the claims come to you with a favorable recommendation. Fairly short meeting, it was very succinct.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the claims.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the claims, this is a hand vote, all those in favor. Claims are, thank you. Moving forward, the one we jumped up to get alien here a little sooner, miscellaneous number two, the council to hear a semi-annual report from Nickelplates Arts. Ms. McGill.
I do have visual aid to hand out, if you guys are willing to. Thank you, perfect, great, so far, so good. Thanks, everybody, for letting me come in and give you an update. Normally, we would have done this a month or two ago, but it's been a weird year, right? So, I just wanted to share really a lot of good news about what's been going on in the creative sector in Noblesville. Just want to remind you, last time I was here, we talked about all that we'd accomplished in the second half of 2019, and then we also talked about our goals for 2020, which included an arts master plan, and Kayla and I and other city members have been working on sort of identifying a top priority list of locations. We've also been really moving the alley activation plan forward, which is super exciting. Another big goal for 2020 before COVID-19 hit was to look at events, and so now we're, that's still a priority, but we're rethinking our strategies for the future, how do events, what role do they play now in this different world that we have, and how do they work, and how do we support these small organizations in bringing, putting together successful events that can still drive commerce and visitation in downtown? We also talked a lot about Noble Maid before, and we're going to talk more about that today. Noble Maid is proving to be a really important anchor point and a key element for economic recovery for the creative class in downtown. And we talked about public art last time, and of course, a lot has happened in terms of moving forward with the North Alley, thanks to a lot of Kayla's efforts. So just to remind you, the, one of the main reasons that the arts are so vital is because they have huge economic impact. According to the Americans for the Arts nationally, the nonprofits, arts and culture industry, so nonprofits, that wouldn't even include like RUF, right, generated $166.3 billion worth of economic activity during 2015, so that's five years ago now even. So, and that helps generate $27.5 billion in revenue to local, state, and federal governments. So that's a really important pot of money that we want to make sure that we're participating in going forward. That amount of money that's generated into the economy by the arts is more than what transportation, tourism, and agriculture produce, so that's really important to note too, how huge that sector is. And then it's also important to note how many people are really engaged in the creative sector. In 2005, according to CityLab, this was the most recent study that's been done, apparently, there were 44 million people engaged in the creative sector, and by 2017, that had grown to more than 56 million people. And according to the Indiana Arts Commission, it's, the rate, the number of people, the percentage of people employed in the creative class in Indiana is higher than the national average, so it's more than 13.6% of our workforce in Indiana are in creative jobs, either working for nonprofits or working for themselves, and everything from, you know, being sculptors and sort of, or performers, as well as being graphic designers and video production, that that all fits in this creative class. So I'm just trying to put that in context as to why we're talking about this today. We've had some really big wins in the past six months, including we were approved for the Art Town Grant, which we'd applied for several times before, and thanks to the very organized effort of David Herschel, we, our application made it through this year, and it was all focused on alley activation, and so that brought an additional $50,000 in for the city, as well as a lot of national recognition. There were only, I think there were 12 or fewer other cities in the nation that were selected this year for this grant. So that's really cool that we are on the radar. As soon as that was announced, I was getting calls from all over the state, from the other cultural districts congratulating us on this grant, it's a big deal. We also finally have gotten alley activation moving, and that's, again, I can't emphasize enough how important Kayla Arnold has been in this process, to coordinating things on the city side to really get those projects moving, but if you haven't walked through the North Alley lately, it's absolutely magical. I was out late over this weekend, I took a late night walk when there was nobody else around in downtown. There are Gobo lights now, which are super cool, it's a theatrical thing that is shining patterns on the wall, so between the Edison lights are there, those theatrical lights, and all the other additions to that alley, it just really is a special place now, where people can spread out and enjoy their food as they're dining at restaurants, or I've seen meetings happening in that alley already, and lots of families playing games there. So it's really, really cool that we've been able to get that rolling, and I think seeing how it works now makes it easier to enact further projects related to activating underutilized spaces around downtown. So Nickelplate Arts is also now the home of the world's first and only lending library devoted to women's history. It's a group called Gals Guide to the Galaxy. They're our latest set of studio artists. They were open for 12 glorious days before the pandemic hit, but they, it's run by Leah Leach, who's, you might know her as a local filmmaker, but lately, she's really put her efforts into empowering various kinds of women's history and professional women's causes, and they have this lending library that is, again, really bringing national attention to Noblesville. And then we had our, we started our second year at Noble Maid as of March 15th, again, really awesome timing for this year, but it means we have a year's worth of data to look at and start really understanding how arts commerce can work in downtown. So just want to show you a couple of graphs, this is actually in the Arts Guide as well, if you ever want to look at it again, but in 2019, we had a record year of visitation. This is adding visitation for Noble Maid, so to be fair, we had two locations to count, but we had over 11,500 people visit our campus and Noble Maid together in 2019. So continued growth in that sector, which is great. Oh, please wake up now, there we go. So, and similarly, we've continued to grow how much art we sell through both Nickelplate and Noble Maid, so $48,000, over $48,000 sold in 2019, worth of art just through our own efforts in our Nickelplate Arts locations. And just to drive this home, we started recording numbers in 2014, we've had a 595% increase in the amount of art sold through our efforts, which shows it takes a long time to build an audience for this, but once you do, that growth can really continue. People are now really recognizing Noblesville as a source for high-quality artisan-made goods and fine art, which is really exciting. So this next slide, I thought you might just like to see the numbers of sales at Noble Maid versus the noble, the number of sales at our Noblesville campus. This was really important to us, we wanted to prove that we weren't poaching sales from one location by having the other one open, but what we see is people think of us in different ways at different times of the year. So Nickelplate Arts has been around for seven years as of the end of this chart, not surprisingly, its numbers tend to be a little higher, but you can see in key months, April, and as well as the summer, which is usually a really hard time for retail, Noble Maid actually peaked over that. We, Noble Maid beat our sales at our Nickelplate campus. Not surprisingly, too, November and December sales are, you know, like the vast majority of sales we make in the year, and that's really important, thinking about the rest of this year, as both Noble Maid and then all the other retailers we work with downtown are going to really be looking at that fourth quarter as super important. Again, I just thought it was kind of interesting to see how it played out over the course of the year. And then I thought it might also be interesting to compare last year's sales to this year's sales, both at Noble Maid and at Nickelplate Arts. So these are, these are our sales patterns for Noble Maid, and the green is 2019, so last year versus 2020 this year. Last year, we were not open in February, we, that's when we shut things down and retooled and rebranded, so that's why we made no sales in that month, but you can see we had a pretty, it was still a pretty fair number of sales this year, and even though we had a pandemic and we shut everything down, there was not a month where we didn't sell something, and that, I think, is really interesting, too. I mean, we were not open to the public in May, but we still made sales because we have an online store, and we had people reaching out to staff saying, oh, I just really need a whatever, and we arranged it for them. So I think, I think that's important to note because the arts really have continued to thrive even through this weird time. Numbers are pretty similar for Nickelplate Arts, we had a big spike in February this year, and that's because we do our Valentine's Day program, so we usually sell extra, you know, stuff, guys who are trying to impress their date will buy extra things in February, just a pro tip. But in June, we, June is the only month where we didn't make a single sale at our Nickelplate campus, and again, these numbers don't reflect what we brought in in donations and program sales, so we still had revenue even during that swing. So it was low, but I thought it was interesting to compare the two, for sure. And just a reminder that those two charts don't include any figures of what artists sold on their own as a result of our promotion. So as I'll detail in a moment, we really engaged our online followers throughout the whole pandemic and did a lot of promotion for artists, and we know we, we sent customers to these folks online, and some of those artists have shared numbers with us on how many sales they made or how much that added up to, but not surprisingly, like filling out surveys and telling us numbers are not their highest priorities right now, so we don't, we don't have full figures on that, but we're hoping to, maybe by the end of the year, we can sort some of that out. So that, just keep in mind that those charts reflect only part of the story of how COVID-19 has impacted us, and, and so all of that value is a little hard to calculate right now. Just another thing to remember about 2019, Nickelplate Arts in particular, so we use a calculator created by Americans for the Arts, they have a calculator that allows you, based on decades of surveys they've done, on economic impact, how much do people spend when they come to an arts event in any particular town? They, they have the ability to calculate, if you know your attendance and you know your budget, you can see your economic impact on the local economy. So through our efforts in 2019, we drove over $500,000 of household income in, in central Indiana, Hamilton County, Noblesville specifically. We drove $27,000 worth of income for local governments and $32,000 worth of income for state governments, and we supported 24 full-time equivalent jobs, just from all the programming, all the staffing that we do, giving people an excuse to come down and go to a restaurant even, that, that's all calculated into this. So I find that significant. This information, since there's a lot of text on here, it's on your sheet that's stuffed into your Arts Guide. We have been working very closely with the Indiana Arts Commission to understand the impact of COVID-19 on everything, on the creative economy throughout the state. So these are notes from a webinar they held that looked at survey data, they've been surveying artists from all over the state, and these are the results. And a couple of just important things to And a couple of just important things to note is that close to 80% of the creative class reported being negatively impacted by the pandemic, that their income was impacted in some way, their ability to get paid work dropped during that period of time. Another interesting thing that has to affect our planning going forward is that because of the way unemployment works, these artists are all able to collect unemployment, and so paying gigs, especially during the pandemic, had to be over $600 for them to justify taking the job instead of taking their unemployment for that week. That may end here shortly, so that may really have an impact, again, on how this sector works moving forward. It's just something we're trying to figure out and negotiate as we go. It's also really important to know that creatives in Indiana earn over 80% of their income from nonprofits and from individuals. So nonprofits hiring them for things like First Friday or for big public art projects, as well as individuals who are buying art from them directly. So as I look at how we can best support this group going forward, these are all things I have to consider. Now, so what Nickelplate has done since the pandemic hit, we really worked immediately to shift all of our programming and all of our engagement online for the period of the shutdown. So we generated 136 videos between mid-March and July 3rd. We had 10 online exhibits in that time, and we're going to continue to have our exhibits online so that people can participate and see them. It also allows us to have more artists involved when we do an online exhibit. We also converted our classes to online, and those have actually been going really well as well, and we now have students from all over the country participating in our online classes, which they couldn't do when we were holding them on our campus. So that's kind of neat as well, and we know that other arts groups have seen the same thing, that they're having national attendance, which is kind of cool. We generated over 53,000 video views for all of those videos between March 28th and July 13th. We know that that Facebook data, there's a lot to parse out in that, but it's still really, I think, it's astronomically more than we did in that same period the year before. So there were a lot of eyeballs hungry for content, seeing what was going on in Noblesville. We have converted our First Fridays to online, again, trying to engage people safely. We're continuing those online First Fridays, and we know that even when we start holding them in person again, they're still going to be a hybrid experience, because we have a lot of, a lot of our core audience is in that vulnerable category that makes it difficult for them to come and participate, but we still really want them to feel like they're part of our community. So hybrid experiences are going to be really important going forward, and we're continuing to learn how to do that well. We've rescheduled our big spring event, which is Welcome to Ferryville. It's now going to be in the fall, in October, and we're looking for ways to make that happen, kind of hopefully regardless of the pandemic. We're looking for ways to mitigate interpersonal interaction that might cause or increase spread, and instead still provide fun opportunities to engage with the subject of fairies and nature along the trail in downtown Noblesville, while also engaging merchants and other folks like that. We restructured our Maker Fair event, which usually goes along with the Strawberry Festival, so we're now doing smaller chunks of makers at other events, like we had one day at the farmer's market. We had, Duck Race was another opportunity, so we're looking for chances for smaller groups of artists to participate on that maker level, and that seems to be going over really well for them, so they can choose if it's a time or an event that they feel is safe for them. And then we're helping Hamilton County Artist Association change Art Fair on the Square into Art Share on the Square, so it'll just be artist demos. They were very nervous about having to handle cash and how you do all the things safely to have those kind of transactions, so instead, they're just inviting all their members to set up on the square this upcoming weekend, demonstrate their art. It should give a great sense of vibrancy to downtown, a sense that things are going on, while still really following good guidelines about how to handle things in the pandemic. We also offered a Facebook masterclass for free. We used Hamilton County Community Foundation emergency funding for that, and we generated from that funding also, as well as from some other sources, we created 250 emergency art kits that we were able to send out to families in need throughout our region. So that included adults and kids who were able to contact us and say that they weren't able to get art supplies during the pandemic, or they weren't able to afford them, and we mailed them or delivered them to them directly. We worked with Noblesville School System to get a lot of those out to kids, and it was such an amazing process to see kids being able to create art again while they're learning at home, really was important to me, for sure. We've been engaging our members by sending out mailings like crazy, including various art projects that can be done in the mail. I think several of you may have gotten some of them. And then, of course, public art has really been able to go on during the pandemic as well. In some ways, it's been easier because people are hungry for it, and there's not as much going on, so construction and installation can be scheduled more easily. So the Gordon Building murals went in during the pandemic. We've been working on that North Alley activation. We've been able to provide some platforms for Black Lives Matter messaging by doing some temporary window art. We've been connecting a lot of artists with projects that they didn't necessarily have access to before, and then we're just continually looking for other ways to engage those artists, including providing more professional development support. As we learn how to do a good online video, we're trying to share that with our artists as well. So our next steps here, we really want to continue to focus on Noble Made as an outlet for artist commerce. So that's, it's easier to operate there. We get better foot traffic than we do at our campus. Our campus is still a really important spot for artist studios, and I'm sure our studio artists will tell you they are super grateful to have one other place they can go during, you know, some social distancing period where they can get work done. But Noble Made is proving to be a much better outlet for retail. It's also proving to be a good cultural connector for the community because folks think to go there to ask questions and to find out what's going on and to get connected with creative people. And then it's also an important added amenity for downtown. Basically, it gives you that one other place you can go when you're considering where you want to go shop or hang out for the evening, and of course, our staff help make sure that the bathrooms stay open, and that's really important to downtown life as well. So we're really going to keep focusing on Noble Made. We're going to continue to build our artist professional development training program, as I said, to help make sure that artists continue to learn new ways to shift their business plans, to make them work online, to engage people in a new way. And then we're also going to really continue to focus on public art because we think that is so important during this period where people want to be outside but can't interact with each other. We want to make sure they're in beautiful spaces that work well. We find that not only can public art increase quality of life, but it really helps with mental health as well, because you're in this thought-provoking, engaging, beautiful environment. It also just allows us to celebrate our outdoor spaces and provide more space for people to spread out as they, you know, if they go pick up food, they can eat in the North Alley, which had not been available before. And then we also see this, and this is really important, we think the arts are a really important factor for economic recovery overall, because we can be a key incentive for development as people look to relocate to downtown. Nickelplate Arts is here and has the resources we need, we have the experience to help them get their public art projects, so they can have a really cool sculpture on their campus. They can have help to get that done in ways that other cities can't offer them. And having a thriving creative economy also gives workers and individuals an extra outlet, both emotionally and economically. There are several people in our network who have really depended on their art side gig to bring in important extra income during this pandemic. So they, you know, if their primary retail job, where they're a cashier or whatever, has shut down, suddenly they really need to be selling masks or their candles or whatever else it is they make to help make those ends meet, and that's been working well through us, and it's a resource we hope to continue to share. So just really quickly, several things are still going on the rest of this year. There should never be an impression that there isn't something going on in Noblesville. Art Share on the Square is happening this weekend. First Fridays continue, and like I say, we're going to work on those being hybrid experiences. We are having our annual fundraiser on September 23rd at Mustard Seed Gardens, which will be a huge fun event. We've moved Welcome to Ferryville, and we hope to really engage lots of people with that event. We're exploring what to do with Day of the Dead, and we're working with our diversity committee, diversity and inclusion, on how to make the most of that Day of the Dead event on November 1st. And then we really are trying to save our resources to invest in holiday sales and promotions, knowing that that fourth quarter is so critical for our creative class. So lots going on. One more thing to share, and that's that the North Alley Art Way should be going in very shortly. I just talked to the artist today. Please ignore the fencing that's on either side of this. That was one option that we've moved away from, but it will say north. It has a really cool emblem of a little sheaf of wheat up in the very top there. I think this is a project that's been in the works for at least three years, and Kayla's finally getting it done. So really, yeah, it is super, super exciting, and like, I think we're minutes away from having this happen. So that's my presentation. Any questions, anything anyone wants to know more about?
Any questions at all, Freyly? I think you ought to get a job you enjoy.
Yeah, you think so? Yeah, I mean...
Thank you very much for your passion.
Absolutely, yeah. I'm glad I get to share that with the city of Noblesville. I live here, I'm proud to do it, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Love that energy.
Yeah, and there's just so much going on, too. That's what's good to hear. Thank you. Moving to previously discussed ordinances, council to consider ordinance number 1607-20, an ordinance amending the traffic schedule in Chapter 78 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Noblesville. Ms. Kropfsky?
I feel very inadequate following Ailey right now. I don't know that I can be that passionate about an ordinance update, but it is closely related to that. Last meeting, I introduced this ordinance update to the traffic code. They were, they're routine updates. The first one was to Schedule 3, and it was intersection control at various locations just due to upgrades made in the city in 2018 and 2019. It also included, in addition to Schedule 12, which will provide a new location for alleys to be restricted for motorized vehicles, and that is a part of the alley activation. And so the first one that will be in this code is the North Alley. There's been no changes to this since our last meeting, and I recommend that we get these adopted, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Kropfsky?
Mr. President?
Mr. Ayer?
I move that the council approve ordinance 1607-20, an ordinance amending the traffic schedule in Chapter 78 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Noblesville.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1607-20. Ms. Lee, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine aye, the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to 1707-20, council to consider ordinance number 1707-20, an ordinance setting sewage rates for the City of Noblesville. This is going to be Mr. Light, Deputy Mayor Matt Light.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, President Hampton, and members of the council, Matt Light, Deputy Mayor, for the record. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak about what we think are necessary investments in our critical infrastructure and rate adjustments that will provide the funds that are needed for core services, and I appreciate your consideration of these proposals. Wanted to supplement some of my comments from the July 14th meeting, specifically to the president's question about outreach efforts in relation to the hardship program and how we'll make sure that folks that might have a need in that regard are aware of the hardship program. In addition to the webpage that we created that is up on the screen for the benefit of those in the room and those watching online, we're also going to be including inserts, or I should say, information on the bill itself that's going to be going out to residents. The one that, the July bill that will be hitting mailboxes next week and inboxes will have in the, kind of the left-hand side of the page, a notice that the council is considering a rate adjustment, information about the rationale behind that proposal, and a link to the webpage that includes this information that's in front of you and that's on the webpage that we have prepared. There will be another notice in the August bill that's payable September 15th or thereabouts, and our billing staff will continue to work with folks that are having difficulty making payments and making sure that they have information about the hardship program, and we'll work to highlight that in other ways as we're able to. I also wanted to reiterate our commitment to completing a review of tap-on fees, availability fees, and bringing back a proposal to you in the fall. We share the view that's been expressed, that current residents shouldn't bear the load of new development, so we commit to bringing that back to you as we study rates in surrounding communities and go through an analysis in many ways similar to what we performed with respect to the wastewater fees. So again, the proposed new rate is $46.13 for residential users. The next ordinance that you're considering, the trash rate based on the new contract, would be $13.85 for a combined bill total of $59.98. As indicated previously, we've worked to try to keep these costs low while also balancing the critical infrastructure needs that have been identified by Ray Thompson and his team. And even with these adjustments, as I included in the packet, we're still on the bottom half of this chart here that shows, in this first page, the wastewater fees, and in this next slide, the combined total of a wastewater payment and a trash fee when compared to neighboring communities in central Indiana. As I stated before, we know that rate adjustments can be difficult in any environment, and we know that we're not in just any environment, and that many people have gone through difficult circumstances based on what's occurred with COVID and the impact on our economy, and that's why Mayor Jensen insisted, again, on having a hardship program associated with this adjustment. So just as a reminder, this hardship program provides for a quarter million dollars in hardship credits in the wastewater program, another $115,000 in credits for trash fees, and that could cover up to 2,778 residents if they are eligible. There's more information available on the website about the projects that are associated with the wastewater adjustment, Lift Station 2 on Allisonville Road, Lift Station 9 on Little Chicago Road, and the fifth phase of the Long-Term Control Plan, which is an unfunded mandate that's been imposed on us by state regulators. We're in the fifth and final phase of that project, and the work there during Phase 5 will be focused on in the Old Town and Southwest Quad parts of the city. Lastly, and look forward to addressing any questions that you have, this proposal would provide a four-year, a rate that would be constant over a four-year period, so it wouldn't change year over year like has been the case in the past, and the rate allows us to have the necessary cash reserves that keeps our credit rating intact and keeps borrowing costs low, which saves taxpayers' money in the long term. So with that, Scott Miller is here from Baker Tilly. Again, Ray Thompson is here as well. If you have any questions for any of us, we would be glad to address those, and thanks again for your consideration.
Any questions at all for Deputy Mayor Light or Mr. Miller? Anyone?
Thank you, Mr. President. As the head of the wastewater committee, I just wanted to say thanks to Ray and his team, and Deputy Mayor Light, thank you very much for everything you've done. As you mentioned, I appreciate that we're going to look at the tap-on fees. I think that is something we need to look at for making sure that we are taking care of our current residents and making sure that we're treating them with a priority. But a lot of this, I know, $4.35 or almost two-thirds of it have to do with, as you mentioned, have to do with the fifth phase of the Long-Term Control Plan, which are unfunded mandates that we had had to do. Unfortunately, didn't get any money from the feds to do, but had to do in order to stay regulated. So because of that, thank you very much to everybody on the committee. We brought this as a favorable recommendation to this and think that this is the right thing to do at this time. So that's the only comments I had, just thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Anyone else? I know, and I wanted to, Deputy Mayor Light, just reiterate... I know, and I wanted to, Deputy Mayor Light, just reiterate, hardship before, it was basically people on fixed incomes. This is different now because of COVID, and the way it applies now is if you've lost wages or lost employment, correct?
That's correct. There are four eligibility criteria. We tried to think through all of the most common scenarios that COVID might have impacted an individual or a household. So if you filed unemployment with the Department of Workforce Development, if you sought assistance, financial assistance from the Township Trustees Office, if you sought energy assistance from the state's LIGHEP or Low Income Housing Energy Assistance Program, or there's a hardship accommodation for independent contractors that you can seek through the Department of Revenue.
Thank you. If there are no more questions, this is a matter of public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing for ordinance number 17-07-20.
President? Seeing no members of the public coming forward, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to, I'd like to move to approve ordinance 1707-20.
Second?
A motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1707-20. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees?
Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine zero, the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Moving to ordinance 1807-20, council to consider ordinance number 1807-20, an ordinance setting trash and recycling fees for the City of Noblesville.
Thank you again, President Hampton and council members, Matt Light, Deputy Mayor. I've talked about some of the aspects of this trash rate adjustment since it's in the combined bill with the utility bill, but just to hit on some of the high points, the proposed new trash rate in the ordinance in front of you is $13.85 a month, and just as with the wastewater adjustment, it would be constant over a four-year period, so that would provide for more budgeting certainty for both residents and for the city. Our previous contract expired in May, so prior to that, we had issued a request for proposals, and Republic Services, the previous provider, was selected as the lowest responsible bidder. While this increase is $2.91 over the previously charged amount to residents, as I pointed out, there had been a gap between what the city was paying for the service and what was charged to residents, so it's $1.85 more than what the previous contract payment to Republic was. And you heard at the last meeting from Craig Lutz from Republic Services, some of the market factors and industry trends that have contributed to the current costs of trash and recycling services for municipalities. I just also wanted to mention that we negotiated a unique feature in the contract that provides for profit sharing if Republic is able to derive profits from the sale of recycling commodities. And again, the same COVID hardship criteria would apply for the trash fee, as would be the case for the wastewater rate, and it would be a 50% discount, so $6.92 off per month for a six-month period. I did want to point out, we need to make an adjustment to the proposal that was provided at the previous meeting to align the dates, the termination date for the hardship period. They were both intended to be February 28, 2021, for a six-month period. We didn't have them lined up when we provided them to you last time, but a clean copy has been provided and included in your packets that would align those dates so that they're both six months in length. Again, appreciate your consideration of this proposal.
Any questions for Mr. Light?
Mr. President, I would move that we amend ordinance 18-17-20 to reflect the date for the hardship support to be ending at the same time as ordinance 1707-20.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to amend the ordinance. All those in favor, it's a hand vote, please raise your right hand. So approved. Now, this is also a matter of public hearing, so I'm opening the public hearing for ordinance number 1807-20.
President?
Mr. O'Connor?
Seeing no one from the public coming forward, I'd move to close the public hearing for ordinance 18-07-20.
Second?
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, right hand, please. Raise your right hand. Hearing is closed. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would move to approve as amended ordinance 18-07-
Second?
Motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1807-20 as amended. This is a roll call. Ms. Lees?
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine zero, the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Moving to number 1907-20, council to consider ordinance number 1907-20, text amendments for the Marion Plan Development Ordinance number 190315 regarding the construction of basements in Sections 3 and 4 south of 166th Street on the west side of Summer Road. Ms. Ashelman?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm really up here to answer any questions that you have. I just have one small point. The ordinance has been amended slightly from its previous iteration. Previously, they had said that they had committed to a 60-square-foot covered patio, screen porch, or sunroom breakfast nook at the rear of the property. They have amended that section to be 100-square-foot space. That's the only significant change from your previous ordinance, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Ms. Ashelman?
President?
Mr. O'Connor?
Denise, is that Section 2, Paragraph B?
Yes.
Okay.
They want to speak at all? I'm not sure.
I'm sure he probably does.
Should we amend it first and then speak, or? Let him, okay, okay. Thank you, Ms. Lees.
Thank you. I just wanted to take this off for a little while. The, thank you for having us this evening. My name is Matt Skelton, partner with Church, Church-Hitlin Antrim, with offices at 2 North 9th Street here in Noblesville. John Isaacs with MI Homes of Indiana is with me this evening, along with Andy Work for my office and Mark Grattison, the developer of the Marion neighborhood. I won't cover everything that I covered last time, just a couple of highlights, please. This project was approved in 2015. MI engaged in the project in 2016. They've been diligent in trying to complete this project since then. They returned to you in 2018 with essentially the same request, except not supported as much, with as many additional requirements as you have before you this evening. And that request ended up being approved, but it wasn't, they sought originally approval of all the lots to not have to require basements. What was approved in 2018, it allowed like 18% of the lots to be without basements. We've learned a lot, and we know that we would not be back here asking you for this alteration if it was not creating a legitimate hardship in the completion of this project. So with that, I would highlight the change that was made to the PUD ordinance, increasing the breakfast nook, screen porch, enclosed patio, or uncovered patio or sunroom to 100 square feet was in response to some feedback we received from council members. So with that, I'm happy to respond to any questions that you may have, and we would respectfully request your approval this evening. Thank you.
Any questions at all? Right, thank you.
President, I'd make a motion to amend ordinance 1907-20 as presented.
We have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 1907-20. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
President, I'd make a motion to approve ordinance 1907-20 as amended.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance 1907-20. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees?
Thank you.
It was not Ms. Lees for the record.
Mr. O'Connor? Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Nay.
Mr. Ayer?
Nay.
Mr. Boyce?
Nay.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton? Five aye, four nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
New ordinances for discussion, number 2007-20. Council to consider ordinance number 20-07-20, an ordinance repealing and amending certain boards and commissions.
I'd like to introduce, Mr. President, ordinance 2007-20.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett, now, I'm sorry.
Good evening, council. Lindsey Bennett, City Attorney. I'm here to do kind of a cleanup ordinance on some of the boards and commissions that currently appear in our ordinances. Shortly after I began earlier this year, it was brought to my attention that the city had several boards and commissions that were no longer active.
Yeah, then I had to mark it out.
And so I've worked with some of the different departments to find out what is active, what's not active, did a little bit of research to see what may be outdated, and so I came up with a list of some of the current boards and commissions that I think that we should clean up in these, in the ordinances. The Downtown Economic Development Authority is one of those that had actually directed an ordinance to be created, I guess to have the rules and parameters of the authority, and then that ordinance was never actually adopted, so it's just kind of been out there without any kind of body or members, so we have thought that that one could probably be repealed. We also have the Emergency Disaster Department. That one was an interesting one. It was created 40 years ago, and the statute that it, that gave its authority to be created has since been repealed, so it's something that we could always recreate. I know, I've talked with the Public Safety Director about maybe doing something like that, you know, certainly this year has shown that you never know when you have some kind of emergency pop-up where you might need to have that department ready to go, so we'll be working on that. The Community Vision for Excellence Committee, again, something that was creative and is no longer active. Historic Preservation Commission, in talking with Planning and Zoning, this is a commission that has been largely assumed by the Noblesville Preservation Alliance. A lot of the duties and the responsibilities that it had now are taken over by the NPA, and the NPA has a strong presence here. They're very tapped into what's going on, and I've seen firsthand at our Plant Commission and BZA that they are very active and have a very active voice. Then the Downtown Strategic Action Committee, we do have the Downtown District Committee within our city council, and then also NPA provides some of those, that support role as well. Another commission was the Human Relations Commission. It was created almost 40 years ago. Its rules have now become outdated, and the responsibilities that it have have largely been assumed by the Indiana Civil Rights Commission. And the, we also have the Noblesville Diversity Coalition. If you're aware, the Noblesville Diversity Coalition is kind of unique to Noblesville, and they provide resources for diversity. I talked with one of our staff members who's a board member there, and he gave me some great information that they, you know, provide resources that increase diversity awareness. They've got educational and listening series where speakers can come and share their experiences. They have, they're going to create a advocacy response team so that they can have referrals for different incidents for people who are victims of discrimination. And then the Indiana Civil Rights Commission, they actually have a complaint procedure, and they have the right to actually enforce the laws on employers or landlords or whoever actually violates civil rights of residents. So there's a actual complaint procedure for the residents of Noblesville that's through the state. They also, in the ordinance, the commission deferred to the ICRC anyway. Basically, they would be kind of just a pass-through to send it to the ICRC. So we have proposed to repeal that as well and just rely on the ICRC as well as the Noblesville Diversity Coalition for those duties. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on any of these.
Questions for Ms. Bennett? Okay. It has been introduced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council to consider ordinance number 2107-20, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of sewage works revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of certain additions, extensions, and improvements to the municipal sewage works of the city, providing for the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said bonds, other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds, and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith. Motion to introduce-
Second?
Mr. Howard.
That was Bond Council's title, not mine.
That had to be your, that had to be your introduction. You wrote that introduction.
Not at all. Purpose of this ordinance is to authorize the issuance of bonds in the amount of $14,900,000 to fund part of the costs of the three projects that are listed in Exhibit A. Essentially, the total cost of those projects is $25 million, and both of those numbers include a 10% contingency over and above engineers' estimates. The balance, or the 10,000, or, I'm sorry, $10,100,000 difference between the bond issue and that estimated cost of the project is coming from cash that's in the utility, and most of that, first of all, there's $2.4 million left from a 2017 bond. There is, and the other six-plus million dollars is coming from the different sub-accounts of the tap-on and availability charges, that is, the plant expansion fund, the interceptor expansion fund, and the operation and management fund. Again, the good news is that those tap-on fees are paying part of this cost. The question is, since that tap-on fee's been $2,715 for, I think, close to 20 years, whether or not we need to go forward, and I appreciate the administration and Baker Tilly moving forward. The, as we said, the rate increase that you just passed would pay the cost of the bonds. Most, you know, and those three, three projects are Phase 5 of the Long Term Control Plan. The Long Term Control Plan started in 2007. I think Mr. Ayers was probably the only one that was still with us at that time, but it's been a long, drawn-out process to bring the city into compliance and long-term compliance with the Clean Water Act. It, and this is, I don't know if I said this is the last phase, thank goodness, and it's funded by this bond. Stony Creek Lift Station upgrade, that is the lift station that's there at Allisonville. If you go down the hills, you're heading south out of town toward the railroad- As you go down the hills, you're heading south out of town toward the railroad crossing. And then the final lift station is some rehabilitation to a lift station at Hawthorne and Little Chicago Road that's, I think, seen better days and needs some strong rehabilitation. The, again, that's kind of the summary of what we're here for. We are in a, still in a very favorable borrowing climate. I want to thank Scott Miller and Andre at Umba, or Baker Telly, formerly known as Umba, for all their efforts, and Scott's here to answer questions, and Ray's here to answer questions, but he said he would be brief. So if you have any questions of them, or if you have any questions of me, ready to answer.
Now would be the time. Any questions at all, Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. Howard, I was reading through the ordinance, and I was just, and this is certainly a matter of timing, but do you see us having to issue bands? Were these four, these were sold for delivery April 21, right? These bonds?
No, these bonds have not been sold.
Okay.
No, and they, I checked with Bond Counsel on that, and they assured me that the bands were there to make flexibility if we decided to need it. Say one project would come in way over bid, and you'd have to figure out a way to come up with a different financing. You'd do, and a band is a bond anticipation note, basically a short-term borrowing that is reimbursed from the long-term financing. So as a, when you've got this many phases and this many variables, the bands just give you some flexibility if something goes wrong. Or something is unanticipated. I guess it wouldn't be wrong if it's just unanticipated.
I think it's misnamed. It should be unanticipated.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Bennett, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to miscellaneous number one, council to consider resolution number RC-31-20, a resolution approving an economic development agreement with Old Town Companies LLC for the Village at Federal Hill project. Mayor Chris Jensen, you are on.
Mr. President, I've been told after an attorney's speech, you always sanitize.
There's been a couple tonight.
I know. There's been a lot.
Ms. Lees, please put that in there.
Please.
It's a community service announcement. Good evening.
It's for everyone else. It's not going to work for you.
So don't. He's throwing rocks at both.
Give this to Patrick Harrington and all the work of the IT company tonight.
There we go. At least it's up here.
Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain.
You may have to extra for this, if this is a presentation.
It is, but it's just going to, he's just going to talk off the one slide. I told you, it's going to work for everybody else.
That's fine, don't worry about it. It's not that important.
No, no, we'll keep going.
Yeah. I'll get started here while Patrick works on this. It's Chris Jensen, Mayor. It's a pleasure to be with you, Mr. President, members of the council. Thank you for allowing me to speak a little bit tonight about a project that is near and dear to my heart, one that I'm excited to bring to you tonight. So I'm here to present resolution 31-20 that would approve an economic development agreement with Old Town Companies for the redevelopment of three acres to a residential mixed-use village development to be known as the Village at Federal Hill. As you recall, this project has been talked to this council several times about, but was presented to the public in February at the State of the City address. And again, we're excited to bring it to you tonight, to the council. I first want to acknowledge our friends at Old Town, my good friend Justin Moffett is here, right here, all right? You moved up on me. I appreciate him and his partner, Chris Farrar, as well, for all of their work, working with the council and the administration on this project. When I think about Justin and their team, you know, excellence and trusted, reputable, committed, are all words that you always want in a full partner, and when you're talking about a $29 million partnership, those are surely adjectives that you want to see, and those come to mind when I think about Justin and his team at Old Town. To quickly orient you, this is a project that is located in and around the Federal Hill Commons. It's east of Blue Sky and across from Review Medical Campus. Ms. Wiles, you get a look at it every day, if you so approve. As we continue to foster a stronger downtown and an east-to-west connection on both sides of our river, this is, as I mentioned earlier, a $29 million investment. That would include 160 apartment units. In those apartments, units will be A-plus quality architecture, which I know is important to this council and to the administration as a whole. A parking solution for the public, anyone who visits Federal Hill Commons, as I do and most of you do on a regular basis, know that we do have a little bit of a parking situation there that we need to rectify going forward. This will have over 400 public spaces, including an approximately 302-space parking garage structure on that site. It will also be the home of 30,000 square feet of commercial office and retail space. All of this, as I said earlier, adds to the livable, walkable connections to downtown and truly makes Federal Hill Commons an even greater commodity to the city as we continue to invest in quality of life and quality of place opportunities on the west side. I want to just add that I know in previous conversations amongst the council, there's been some concern, not concern, but simple questions about the architecture on the northern-facing side of the parking structure facing Kroger. I think earlier today or yesterday, I believe you should have received an email from Kayla Arnold soliciting your input on that architecture that will be in front of, incorporated into this project. As you all know, much like many projects, this project will come back in front of you at a later date with final approvals for those architecture renderings and different questions you may have on the council beyond the development agreement. As we discussed in how we've done in the past as well, there will be a subcommittee that will be formed featuring Sarah Reed and Alec Krupski, as well as, I believe, Council President Will Hampton and others, that will work directly with Old Town to finalize those final details in terms of architecture before it comes back in front of the council here at a later date. So with that, I will conclude my remarks on this, but I will just reinforce my full support of this project. I think this will be a marquee moment for us as we continue to invest on the west side of the river, and would ask for your support tonight. I'm happy to bring up Andrew Murray, the head of our Economic Development Department, if you have any further questions about the details of the development agreement that you'll be considering this evening. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions for the mayor or for Andrew, Mr. Murray?
No, no question. No need, Mr. O'Connor. No need to bring him up if you don't want to. He's fine.
It was a suspect there last week.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true.
So is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I will make a motion that we approve miscellaneous number one, council to consider resolution RC-31-20.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution RC-31-20. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Moving to miscellaneous number three, council to consider receipt of summary of fiscally-neutral second-quarter appropriation transfers pursuant to resolution RC-03-20. Mr. Paris.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. This item is a report, as you said, pursuant to RC-0320. This is a resolution that council adopted earlier in the year. It gives the Controller's Office the authority to make small, fiscally-neutral appropriation transfers, as long as they don't exceed a certain dollar threshold and they're technical in nature. So this is the second quarterly report you've received pursuant to the language in that resolution. In this case, we have three transfers, largest by far. Just by way of example, it's $40,000 within the street department's budget. What happened is they originally had budgeted money for to hire a contractor to do some landscaping on some roundabouts. They, upon review, determined it would be more cost-effective to just buy the supplies themselves, have their own employees do the work. That requires moving money around in their budget from the 300 series, which is for services and other charges, and the 200 series, which is for supplies. So in prior years, they would have come to council to get that approved ahead of time. Instead, that action's already been initiated, and it's now just being reported to you by way of information. There's two other transfers in here. They're similar, but they're both under $2,000. I'm not going to go into them unless anybody wants me to. And then there will be one more. The next report on this will be after the third quarter, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Paris?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve miscellaneous number three, council to consider...
Mr. O'Connor, yeah, this is just them letting us know.
Sorry.
No action is required.
No action, yeah. But thank you for jumping on it.
This is FYI.
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the information. Council comments? Are there any comments this evening? Ms. Wiles?
So in light of the numbers related to COVID that continue to increase, there has been an increase in testing over the last several weeks. Riverview Health has been one of those leading testing sites and actually designated as one of the 12 sites throughout the state of Indiana. Unfortunately, the federal government has taken a number, the allocation of testing equipment, or the tests themselves, and directed those to more of the hotspots throughout the country. So over the next few weeks, you might see some of the testing numbers going down, and people are going to think, hey, we've got it taken care of, and we don't have to wear the masks anymore. That's not the case. I would encourage you all to continue to wear your masks, wash your hands, and maintain social distance so that we can continue to try to get back to a more normal environment and normal lives, and hopefully send our kids off to school. So please wear your masks. Thank you very much.
The mayor? You're, this is council comments.
I know it is, but I was asked by a counselor to fill in on these comments because she was busy talking about masks. So I'm going to, if I may, Counsel Wiles forwarded me an email from Nancy Chance, who you all know and love, and I would just like to acknowledge Nancy and the work that they do at Good Samaritan, but she also heads up a co-ed organization that was recently recognized by the American Red Cross, as well as the Salvation Army for all the work they did during COVID relief. They were able to distribute 1.9 million pounds of food to needy organizations within Hamilton County. And I think, I would think 1.9 is just incredible, and I think that is worth acknowledging here tonight, because I know we were in Noblesville, the recipient of a lot of that. So just wanted to go on record as thanking Nancy and their crew, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
We are adjourned.